And the pledge of allegiance, we can get going.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Got my readers, if you want them.
Okay, first thing on, well, approve the agenda. I know we have a couple additions already under miscellaneous. We're gonna add this MCDICI addition, which has to do with some SEC reporting.
That would be the municipality's continuing disclosure cooperation initiative.
That, and then we also have a gambling permit that Mary Jo handed out that we would like to get, they would like to get that approved tonight, too. So, those are two additions I'd like to add. Anything else? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Pat Scripture. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda is the public hearing for the New Prague Charter. Mike, do you want to kind of do a little introduction to that?
Sure, there's a brief background to this. The council introduced the, excuse me, originally considered the introduction of an ordinance on October 6th, 2014. On October 20th, you formally adopted the ordinance and called for a public hearing to be held tonight at 7:00 PM. In the meantime, we published in the newspaper the proposed draft of the revisions and the amendments to the city's charter for discussion. That was published, I believe, October 30th. It was in the New Prague Times, so we've complied with all the requirements under the statute to get it to the public hearing tonight. We have with us Mrs. Kay Wilcox, Chair of the Charter Commission, in case she has any final words or recommendations of the council, but otherwise, the opportunity tonight is to hold the public hearing, close the hearing, and adopt the ordinance. Following the adoption of the ordinance, we would intend to publish the charter again next week in the newspaper, and then following 90 days from that publication, assuming no objections are received, the charter amendments would go into effect.
And do we have to publish the whole charter again?
Yes, that's correct.
Patrick, you guys are making out like bandits. Okay, I guess, thanks for the introduction there, Mike. I guess I'll open the public hearing. If you have any comments to make, we invite you to come to the microphone, sit down, come to the microphone, name, address, and any comments you'd like to make. So, I guess I'll open the public hearing to anyone who would like to make a comment. I don't see too many people rushing to the microphone, so I guess with that, I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a second by Sean Ryan. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, any comments from any of the council people? And I'd like to, the only comment I'd like to make, being Kay is here, is I'd like to thank all the members of the Charter Commission. I'm sure it's not something they were planning to do, but we had a lot of great people step up, and they did a great job, and Kay, thank you for chairing it. And, you know, I know from now on, you're just gonna love those annual meetings, because, you know, once you did the dirty work now, things will go a lot smoother, but... Yes, well, thank you again for your hard work and chairing it, so. Any other comments? If not, I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve the amendments to the New Prague City Charter.
Move.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments?
Dave Brujek.
Oh, I thought I heard it from this side. I'm sorry. Motion by, Dave Brujek, second by Sean Ryan. I'm sorry, I thought I heard the, my eyesight must be okay, the ears aren't going, but, if there's no other further comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, it passes 5-0. Thanks again, Kay. Okay, next, presentation by the New Prague Baseball Association. Mike, are you gonna take that, or is, or Mike?
I can give some background, but we have a couple of the committee members that are with us tonight. Give you a little bit of background. Following the original meeting that we had, I believe it was back in early October with the baseball committee, one of the things that they took a look at is that we knew we needed to get some assistance in trying to figure out how we can lay out all the ideas that the baseball committee has generated in trying to go through a facilities planning process. To date, the INS group out of Fairbolt, of which we have one of the local associate principals and managing partners, that being Brian Jardy of New Prague, who met with Glenn and I following that meeting. Their firm has already provided a topo survey of the entire baseball site and ancillary facilities around there. He has a significant interest as a resident of New Prague and a son who plays baseball, and as we met with him to talk to him about what their firm is willing to do, Jerry Plumback of the Orioles had indicated that he was willing to do something, and so we met with him following that October meeting, and come to find out that his firm is willing to provide at no cost to the city, all of the facilities planning efforts to take a look at the improvements, the cost estimates, renderings of the proposed improvements, and a proposed schedule of activities and priorities to take a look at what is going to be needed, so that that plan can be brought back to the council sometime in the spring to determine, based on the funding commitments that are made either by the city or are privately raised, how we can go about undertaking some of those improvements. We reviewed the proposal that's in your packet this evening with the baseball committee last Wednesday, and the committee, wholeheartedly based on a motion and second in action, is recommending the council that INS group be retained to undertake the planning phase services as described in the enclosed proposal. Following that, we still have a choice down the road as to where we want to go, that if we choose to build something, or have to develop plans and specs to go out to bid on various facets of that, they've indicated a willingness to submit subsequent proposals to assist in the design work that would go with that. They've indicated that they would further discount their services to only include their, only their costs and overhead expenses, and so before we would take any action, you'd be able to see a proposal and take action on those proposals, whether that's building a new restroom, whether that's building a concession stand, whether it's adding a press box, whether it means anything with the electrical lighting, any grading work, and all those kind of things, is helping us evaluate. They have an extensive amount of experience in facilities planning and football, baseball, other stadium-type improvements of park facilities around the state and in the Midwest, and you can see we've included some materials in your packet. So, Mike is here as one of the committee members. As I indicated, that committee is wholeheartedly recommending that we retain those services at no cost to assist the committee in the process.
Yeah?
Councilmember Brujek was at the meeting. I don't know if you have any, David, that you'd like to add?
No, only that I'm very impressed with the willingness of all the people that are, have come forward and are willing to serve on that committee. It's been great.
It truly is a cross-section of the baseball community, whether it's the school district, the New Prague Orioles, New Prague Youth Baseball Association, and community members at large. It truly is 12-plus people of all the baseball interests in that group. I think now moving forward to talk about improvements and discuss improvements that would benefit all groups to then bring before you guys at a later date.
What's the timeframe are you looking at to kind of put that list together?
Yeah, probably as expeditiously as possible. I think as the calendar turns to 2015, hopefully beginning some traction. I hope by January, February, March, somewhere in that quarter, to be coming back to you guys with something.
We reviewed, Brian wasn't able to be at the meeting, but he had another engineer there in his place because he had troubles getting out of Denver this week with snow problems, but he had developed a conceptual outline that they are refining that we'll have at our next December meeting. The baseball group has committed a meeting at least once a month, if not more often, to try to work through December, January, February, and hopefully be done into early March, so that we don't lose the construction season. So, they'll have a specific calendar of events and activities, so that they know where they're headed in this planning process.
And the groups plan to meet December 10th before our larger, excuse me, larger committee to talk about funding and fundraising, how the groups can begin to think of different ideas, turn to the table to offset some of the costs down the road, and so we're looking to get more of a, of an initial thought process and plan going in that regard as well.
Any questions for Mike or Mike?
So, when they finally do end up doing some things, then do we get bids from other people on those?
Yes, that we will have to comply with any of the work that we propose to do. We would have to comply with the Minnesota statutes in regards to either getting quotations or bids for the various facets of it. When they go through the planning work and identify all of the facility improvements that they would propose, is we'd take a look at that, but in most cases, would attempt to prepare either quotations, if it's a smaller dollar amount type item, if it's something more formal and hits a certain bid amount, then we would actually have to have plans and specs and bid that out, like any of our other projects. The council would end up seeing all of those ancillary proposals and taking action, since it is a city facility. We'd work through the process, assuming we retain INS to help in those processes with the baseball committee with recommendations coming to the council to implement those various stages.
Any other questions? Jerry, do you have any, anything you wanted, like to add? There is no other comments. I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the proposal by IS, was it IS?
INS.
INS group.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Pat Scripture. If there's no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Good job, guys.
Thank you, Mike and Jerry.
Chris, I assume you're taking the next item, the 2015?
Got it, Mayor. Pop this up. Okay, Mayor members of City Council, before you, for your consideration is resolutions for receiving the report and calling for the hearing on the improvement, and then also the municipal state aid, street fund advance. The feasibility study is complete. You should have a copy of it, that should have been distributed with the agenda. I do want to point out that contrary to the second paragraph in the agenda report, we decided to go ahead and just finalize the report and bind it. So, you will want to hang on to this and bring it back for the public hearing on the first. So, sometimes if we've got maybe a questionable thing that's hanging, we'll leave it as a draft until then, but we've felt to go ahead and finalize that, so. So, I want to point out, I think it's on the screen, probably there for the public as well, this is the, the project area, and I think I'll go to a little bigger picture here where we can show that. The 2009 capital improvements plan was assembled, identified this neighborhood for 2015, over here in that west side of town, west of Truck Highway 21. Also over there is the, was an area that was identified for the following year in 2016. If you recall, when we started this study, we've been doing a little head-scratching over the last couple of years, really how we want to deal with this neighborhood. So, we had recommended that, that both areas be included in the single study, the 2015 study, and basically to get right to the short of it, we are recommending that actually this be combined as one project in 2015, and I'll go over some of the reasonings why here. The area that's part of the full study is, and this is, I'll apologize, north is to the right here. It's Fifth Street from Main Street up to, just north of, I'm sorry, Fifth Avenue from Main Street up to just north of Third Street, Sixth Avenue from Main Street all the way up to Sixth Street, the stretch of First Street from west of Sixth Avenue up to Fourth Avenue, the segment of Second Street from Sixth Avenue to Fourth Avenue, and this segment of Third Street from Sixth Avenue to Fourth Avenue. We also, and part of the study, wanted to take a look and see if there was anything we should be considering for this area. It's, if you're familiar with it, it's on the south end of the property owned by the city. It's part of the Public Safety Building. There's a, essentially a private driveway, almost used as a roadway. There is a water main that's in, in an easement through there. So, their question was really whether or not we should consider doing something with it under this project. And right to it, the, we are recommending that nothing be done at this time, mostly because there's adequate access for that area, and this is property that probably could be developed, and, and to take that, take out what essentially would be needed for public right-of-way would take away from property that could be developed. So, at this point, I think until something is proposed there, we would recommend essentially leaving it as it is, and again, making that available for its higher and better use, which would probably be some type of development or of city use for that property. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on October 16th. We didn't get as much turnout as we typically would, would normally see. We only had eight property owners of 90, eight property owners of 90 properties that are in the project area, so it was about 9%. And typically, we're, we see up around 25, 30% attendance, so, little bit different makeup. There's some apartments there, there's some townhomes that might be part of it. So, I want to jump to...
Can I ask?
Yes, sure.
Was there any things brought up at that public meeting?
Pretty, pretty standard. We went through the, the normal presentation. We talked a little bit about, and some of the items I'll cover here, about sidewalk and some street widths, and we talked about the one, the one-way that's over there, and so those are some of the items that, you know, the residents maybe had some, either some concerns about or comments about, but other than that, no, it was pretty standard. So, the one reason, when, the project is identified in the capital improvements plan, we, I know when we identified it back in 2009, we had some, we weren't exactly sure on, on how to deal with some of these streets, because they aren't as old as a lot of the streets that we've been working with over the years, and I mentioned this when we started the study. The streets, basically, the streets and utilities over there were built in about 1980, so we're talking about 35 years, and from an engineering and infrastructure standpoint, that's not real old for infrastructure. The pavement's obviously in poor shape, and something needs to be done with the majority of that pavement there, but curb is in good shape. We discovered early on in the study, or it was about the time we were beginning the study, that the sewers were built, again, in 1980, and they were made out of what they call PVC truss pipe, and I should have brought a diagram to explain what it looks like. But it's basically pipe, it's PVC inner layer, PVC outer layer, and then it's held together with like a corrugated PVC layer that reinforces it, and then it's, actually the voids are filled with a lightweight concrete. Probably more information you want to hear, but it's kind of an unusual pipe that we don't see a lot of these days. It was constructed, used quite a bit more back 30-some years ago. Other areas of the country are still using it, but it's not really used here in Minnesota. Pretty much, everybody's gone to normal PVC plastic pipe. So, we really expected, when we televised, that we would find really no issues. We were expecting it to be good plastic pipe, and for the most part, about 90% of it is in really great shape. We found some anomalies that were shown in the photos in your, in your report, and I'm actually gonna give you a quick little snippet of video I wanted to see. Mike thought it might be interesting for the council, maybe the public, to see a quick section of this. What we're seeing in this, in these photographs is we have about 25 joints in some 3,000 feet of pipe, where we've got these, what they call incrustations or mineral deposits, that are actually so bad that it's affecting the flow-in spots, and so we've been doing a lot of investigation and talking to different pipe cleaners on how to deal with this, and, and part of the issue is some of the normal cleaning equipment would damage this type of pipe. If it was steel pipe or clay pipe, it'd be a non-issue, but because it's this PVC pipe that's actually really thin walls, held together by this corrugation, you start beating up or cleaning up that pipe, you could actually damage it. So, we're trying to confirm exactly how we're gonna deal with this, and they're recommending a really high-pressure jets to clean this out. But so we have, the pipe is good, and we want to maintain it, but we need to go in there and rehab it, so that it can have another 30, 35 years of life left in it before something more significant needs to be done with it. So, if, bear with me for just a sec, I thought I'd show you, again, we video, you know, all the projects in the past, we video the sanitary sewer, mostly just to identify where our service is located, et cetera, but on this project, we knew we were, we were, we needed to find out what type of rehabilitation needed to be done to make sure that if we're rehabbing the streets on top, that, oh, I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. There we go. If we hit the, if we were rehabilitating the streets on top, we want to make sure that the infrastructure underneath was in good shape. So, what you're seeing here is a picture of this pipe as it's being televised, and I'm just gonna give you about less than a minute's worth of video here, if everything works out fine. So, they started out, they look at it, starting out from the, the beginning of the pipe, and I'll show you what, you can see what it looks like here. Oh, this may not work like I was expecting it to. So, you can see this is generally good, clean PVC pipe, and then we get to these areas where we got these joints, and then I'm gonna jump ahead here, so you can kind of see right to the end here. Again, you can see nice, clean PVC pipe, and then we get to these joints, and you can see the dripping, that's from mineralization and infiltration that has occurred, and it's obviously affected flow, because you can see the stuff that's getting caught up. So, this is, again, we need to rehabilitate the sewers, and we need to do it in a cost-effective manner. We're not having to replace it, we're not needing to line it, we're gonna need to basically go in and clean it, and we need to seal some joints, and so there's a process where we can actually do that.
And then it won't come back?
What's that?
And then that stuff won't come back?
There's the potential, but again, we will, we can use a process called chemical grout, which basically injects a chemical into the soil around the pipe and solidifies and seals that up. There is the potential of that, and that is something that can be maintained and watched over time. One thing that we talked about between Glenn and Mike and I is what is the next generation of improvements that would happen on this sewer? A lot of these are actually fairly deep over there. Sewers like this would, would probably be lined in another, you know, 30, 35 years from now, we'd probably look at doing a trenchless lining of the pipe, or potentially just cleaning it. Again, we've got 35-year-old infrastructure that's still in good shape, and, and has more life left in it.
So, Chris, is that, when you say they're gonna seal it, do they do that from the inside of the pipe?
Yes, it's all done trenchless. We do have one spot where we are gonna need to dig up about 30 to 40 feet of pipe. We got some alignment issues, we got some pipe that's a little egg-shaped, so we are gonna actually have to excavate that, replace that segment of pipe, but the rest of it's all left in place. And I can, I'll mention here when we get to costs a little bit, what that impact is, meaning there's significant savings, because we're not looking at, at replacement here. If I go back to the report here. So, so when I, I get back to when we refer to the streets, the type of improvements that we're looking at at those streets, you know, you've heard me mention this in the past, we talk about a life cycle of a street. The streets that we've just built recently, we look at that sub-bass, the gravel, the sand, all that infrastructure's gonna have a, I'd say a 50-plus-year life or more. The pavement itself, we talk about a 20, 25, 30-year maximum life. We've actually got over 30, you know, basically 35 years out of the pavement over in this neighborhood. But if you look at, a lot of the curb's in really good shape, and we really need to just replace the pavement for the most, most part. So, we are proposing actually two methods. For the majority of the neighborhood, we're talking about with basically a pavement replacement, where you use a process where we totally grind up, pulverize the pavement, turn it basically back into gravel, you haul away the excess that's not needed, and you basically pave new, two, two new layers of blacktop over those streets. There is a segment up here on the northerly end of Sixth Avenue that's actually fairly, much newer, it's about 20 years old. It's actually a prime candidate for an overlay, which is really the type of improvement that we, we target after a street meets, meets a certain age. We protect or preserve the pavement that was put down without having to replace it right away. We've passed that opportunity in these other neighborhoods, because again, they're over 35 years old, but a simple replacement of the pavement is, is effective and, and convenient to do without having to totally reconstruct a road. The one little, called glitch in this whole process, if you want to call it that, is we are going to need to actually replace water main on Fifth Street, three blocks of it. So, we spent a lot of time, discussion between Bruce and Glenn and I, what is really the appropriate process to go through here. There's been a significant number of water main breaks that have occurred on Fifth Avenue. Hasn't occurred on the other streets, on Sixth Avenue, but they've occurred on Fifth Avenue. So, basically, a decision was made that we, we really need to replace that water main. So, while we're looking at a method of street rehab that's not real invasive, we are gonna have to actually do some trenching and replace that pavement. We'll actually do a process where we just remove the pavement over the trench area. They'll probably grind it up, just like I was saying, they'll, they'll remove it, dig down and replace the, the water main, and then put that gravel back, without us really having to, again, reconstruct the road. We're gonna try to maintain that curb line on that side of the road, et cetera, but it, again, that water main needs to be replaced, but again, we can preserve that roadbed in that, that original construction. The sewer in that area, again, is, is what I was showing you before, it doesn't need to be dug out up, it's fairly deep, and we don't have to do an invasive type of construction. So, so that's kind of the streets and the utilities. The other item that we need to point out is, and I'm just, I just showed this, it is in your report, the city's comprehensive sidewalk plan, that does show where sidewalks need to be filled in in different areas throughout the community, and we do have about three locations on this project where, that have been identified in the sidewalk, comprehensive sidewalk plan, to have sidewalk added to. And I'll back up here, just so I can point them out kind of globally. We have sidewalk along the townhomes here on First Street, this area in red that need to be, basically to fill in the gap. There is sidewalk right now along Sixth Avenue, along this stretch, and it ends here at the park. The other segment is this stretch of Sixth Avenue up to Sixth Street, sidewalk needs to be added, and in both of these places, it fits, fits just fine. The one area where we had some challenge is Second Street. So, the, again, the comprehensive plan identifies sidewalk along this north side of Second Street, between Fourth Avenue and Sixth Avenue. Let me jump ahead here. So, we're showing it here on this, on this, on this diagram, we're showing it along the north side of the road. To physically get this sidewalk to fit and to meet ADA requirements for the sidewalk, and to meet the requirements to maintain, we have existing driveways. The bigger issue is the two driveways between Fourth and Fifth Avenues are fairly steep, if you ever go over. If you ever go over there and happen to take a look, they're fairly steep already. And for us to get this to fit, we're actually going to have to narrow the street up. We're proposing to narrow the street, take off this curb line and basically just shift it in. We're proposing to narrow the street by 5.3 feet is what we're showing. So if we're going to, we're going to narrow that road from 29.3 to 24 feet. We actually have a number of streets in there that we've done in recent years because of the narrow right-of-ways that are 24 feet wide. So it's not much different than what we've had in this area. What we are recommending, that if we do that, then we would also prohibit parking on one side of the street. So we'd basically reduce the parking to one-sided parking to accommodate the pedestrian access there. And from an engineering standpoint, that's the only way we can get this actually to fit and to work. So in the report, we, that's our recommendation. We had mentioned at the neighborhood meeting that sidewalk was proposed at this location, but we hadn't had the, we didn't have a lot of the details yet in terms of, we had to go back and get more topography, topo survey to confirm how things were going to fit. So we didn't present to them that the road would be narrowed. And again, I guess the way I look at it too is the, there's four properties that are directly affected, and they all, except for the property on Main, or on Fourth Avenue, they all have a side street, they're on a corner and stuff. So I, I don't see too much impact from that standpoint. Again, it, it's to help the driveways and help everything fit better.
Did I hear you correctly that at the neighborhood meeting, you didn't tell the neighbors that was, this was going to happen?
Well, we said that there would be sidewalk along the north side, and there was one, one of the four residents on, or one of eight residents that live along Second Street that were at that meeting. And there were, there were no comments, one way or another. But we, again, we didn't, we knew the sidewalk would be along there, but we did not know that we were going to need to narrow this road to make this fit.
That there'd be parking on only one side, right?
Yeah, which again, I don't think is, is inconveniencing somebody dramatically. Again, everybody except for the one that's on Fourth, on the highway, everybody's on a corner. They still have parking on the street, it's just on one side. Jumping quick to costs, you'll notice it's, I know it's in the, the executive summary and then also in the report. We've estimated the cost at, total project cost at just over 1.3 million. To give you a frame of reference, the projects, the two projects, the 2016, 2015 project identifying the capital improvements plan, some of that was looked at, at a more, and we're looking at a total reconstruction in some areas. We had initially in 2009 estimated a project that was going to be about just over 2.5 million. So you can see from 1.3 million to 2.5 million, we were, we're looking at a significant, less costly project than from before. And that savings or reduction in impact is on the sanitary sewer improvements aren't going to be as, as, as great as what we initially thought, as well as the water utility improvements are going to be less than we initially had thought. But the biggest savings is going to be in the capital or the general levy and things like that. So again, because of the nature of the type of work, because of the size of the project as it is now, the fact that we can get in, get done, and get that inconvenience out of the way, we are recommending, again, that this project be consolidated into one single project in 2015. So I guess with that, that's the, oh, sorry, the, the next item, I mean, I guess I should just pop through to that. Again, these are the costs as I had them outlined in the report, at 1.3 million. We do have the funding outlined. And talk a little bit about the assessments. Again, in, in past, most recent years, we have been looking at complete total reconstruction projects. And the amount, we, we showed as a frame of, as a reference, the 2014 assessment rates that were done on the last project this past year, for a complete reconstruction was $7,960 for the street assessment portion of the project for the residents. We don't have that this year. We're looking at a, again, a type of improvement that costs less, and therefore the assessments are less. We did do a small portion of pavement replacement back in 2010, and I've noted that here in the report. That assessment rate per unit in 2010 was $4,100. Basically, the assessment rate that was derived or recommended, proposed for this project was basically equivalent to the increase that we saw from 2010 to 2014. And we're recommending about $4,600 per unit for the pavement replacement for residents. We're showing also the commercial rate there at 5, 5,980 per unit. Mill and overlay only affects commercial properties. This was also based on some past experience with, again, similar type of assessments. At 2,600, and the idea being that this will cover about 30 to 40% of the cost of the project. And I think I estimated it about, it came out about 34%. These assessment rates were covering about 34% of the cost of the project. We are showing the water service, service assessment. Again, as we've noted in the past, we're seeing a fairly significant increase on the pipe materials, copper, PVC, polyethylene. And so we are showing this rate at about a 5% increase from this past year, from 20, from 2014. We're showing a 1,210 was this year, we're proposing 1,270 for water service assessments. And that would be applied to the properties along Fifth Avenue that are having that water, water main replaced, and the water services would have to be replaced at the same time. So that's the report in more than a nutshell, I guess. I guess I'll entertain questions. The other item that goes along with this is recommendation to request an advance of state aid funds. As I noted in the report, Sixth Avenue, from Main up to Sixth Street is a state aid street, much like Second Street that we did here in 2012. We can utilize the city's construction funds to fund the improvements on that portion of the project, help subsidize it. Right now, our construction account is actually in the red, which is actually, for a long story, that's actually a good thing. We actually took an advance in 2012. It's a no-interest advance from state aid. What this resolution does is it leaves the option open for the city to request another advance and basically will get paid back again over, over the next couple of years. As I had projected, we would be back at, at, at zero basically at the end of 2015. The state aid portion of this got bumped up if we do this in 2015. So we would, we would look to need to do an advance to get, to get those funds right away this year. So and the, the request for advance does not obligate the city to take that money. But certainly would be my recommendation that, that be done, and because it basically, we've, we've covered those fundable costs now, and then we'll rebuild that fund for later on in the future.
Chris, is there any limit on how many times we can request the advance?
No, it's, to a quick explanation, we are part of a pool or collective of all cities, over 5,000. It's, and this is the highway users' gas tax, it's a fund that's funded by gas tax. And so all these communities have these funds that are held in reserve. And not everybody uses them all the same year. So, so there is money in reserve. And when there's a certain, at a certain level, they, they promote it every year to make sure that communities take, take advantage of doing that. And they allow us to take up to five times our annual allotment if, if we need to do that. At some times during the, you know, at some years, if a lot of communities have done projects, the fund balance gets fairly, can get low, and then they will basically suggest or recommend there'll be limited amount of advances. That's not the case this year, they're projecting that there will be adequate amount to, to advance. And 360,000 that we're recommending is obviously not real significant compared to some cities.
Do we have any projects coming in the future that are state aid roads that might, we might want to save for that, or?
Well, yes, there are. And, well, not, it's, my, my recommendation, when it comes to the state aid funding account, saving is not necessarily the, it's what a lot of, some communities and some people will, will do, and they'll, they look at it that way. But really, we're better off to use it as more of a, kind of a scenario to either advance funds, or if we get into like a big project, let's say, a big Main Street project or something where we could use state aid funds, we'd look at a program of bonding, using state aid bonding, things like that. So again, it's a way to advance funds. We actually, ironically, when we are in, in the red or we've borrowed ahead, we actually get more money from state. There's a funding process where they calculate what they call need. And while, when a community has less money in their account because they've utilized their funds, they actually get more money because of it. So it's, in a way, it's kind of like a loan where you actually get paid more money. So. So yes, we've projected that in about, I think another two or three years, we'll be looking at another project. I think it's First Street here towards the east, that'll be state aid eligible. We also have potential of a Main Street project where we could use state aid funds on that as well. That's what we call off-system route money. And again, we can, there's a number of methods and systems that we can use.
Chris, could you and Bruce talk a little bit about, you touched on this sewer as far as the condition and not needing to replace that, but just do some internal repairs? Can you talk a little bit about why the need to replace the water line within this 35-year timeframe?
I think I'll leave that.
Kind of what we've run into in, in this area here, we don't know for sure if it's soil differentials because of the change in terrain there, right, going on to, on to Fifth? Or if, or if we just plain old have some bad water main. But we've, we've had, I believe, seven water main breaks over the last few years, right in that given area. When we inspect those pipes, we really can't see or blame it on deterioration of pipe. Sometimes we'll have that issue where it's electrolysis or acidic soils that are eating away at those pipes. We can't really say it's that. So we, we more or less are blaming it on soil differential or a lot of soil change and get a lot of shift there in the seasons. So we're recommending that that section get replaced. As much as we'd like to not have to tear into the street there when the city's not going to, we feel it'd be foolhardedly not to put in water main in there and then have a new street and then have to tear it up to replace or repair it. So we're, we're leaning to replacement of that section. And it's going to be a little more expensive on the water department's side to do that, but we feel it's important to do that. Six, on the other hand, we haven't had any repairs, so we're just going to replace all the valving on it and fire hydrants. On Fifth are also getting replaced, but just some more maintenance items to take care of that area, and then we think will be sufficient for that part. In a nutshell, that kind of covers it.
If you put it in the same area, are you going to have the same problem?
Well, we're going to go with PVC versus metal reductile pipe, and there's some more flexibility in that. We haven't had issues with PVC in other areas that we've put it in, and we've got a lot of, a lot of it in the ground now. So we know there's more flexibility in PVC, and hopefully that will help in that situation over there. And also, it may not be bedded properly. We don't know that for sure. And obviously, when we replace it, we'll bed it properly with sand, and that also helps for, give it some room to move.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, did this go to the, report go to the planning commission?
No. And typically, a report identifying the capital improvements plan would not. I think the capital improvements plan, plan back in 2009 may have been presented to the planning commission, do you recall, Ken?
I don't remember exactly, could have.
But yeah, projects that are identified in the capital improvements plan by, are not required to go to the planning commission because it's not expansion of, of new facilities, so.
Don't we need a resolution saying that it doesn't need to go there because it doesn't, like, apply? Or it doesn't have anything to do with the comprehensive plan?
I believe the resolution.
I believe that would come at the next meeting when you adopt. This one is just simply accepting the report and calling for a hearing. That hearing would be on December 1st, and I believe it would be contained within the resolution at that meeting.
I was thinking that this.
It is in the report, it is identified in the report, and I, yeah, I can't recall.
In case they had any issues with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. And again, I don't know if this is more of a comment for the attorney, but yeah, as I understand it, if it's, again, infrastructure reconstruction is not expansion of facilities, that it's, and it's been identified in the report that it's not, that it's in part of the capital improvements plan and not. I don't know the exact terminology, but.
Well, I can jump in, Chris, but that's basically correct. If it's not part, and it's not part and parcel dealing with new facilities, things like that, that should be correct. And I, I haven't seen the resolution, but it certainly can be added to the next meeting approval and put that there if you so desire. But if it's identified in the plan, and that's what's being accepted, I think that's, that's workable as well.
And there's nowhere else that sidewalk could go? So I don't really like the idea of making the streets smaller and parking only on one side. Make it pretty inconvenient for the neighbors.
Well, we, Glenn and I and our staff actually looked at another street, but we, you know, after further discussion again with Ken and looking at the capital improvements plan, Second Street really is the street where it needs to be. And there is no way to put that sidewalk in without narrowing the street. Physically, it won't fit.
We, we talked at length about this. They had brought up, you know, would Third be a good alternative route? And the reason why Third is not a good alternative route, albeit a good area for the sidewalk to fit, is that we're trying to get, and as identified in the sidewalk plan, the continuity from Columbus Avenue on Second all the way over to what will eventually lead into Raven Stream subdivision once Second Street's extended over that far, but to get that, that route all the way through. And just from experience, I used to live in the area and know people that still live in the area, there's a lot of foot traffic down Second, whether it be to the Casey Store or actually all the way over on Second on our new sidewalk, that goes past the old Creamery property. But yeah, we look at the north side of the road, south side is no better because you have homes that are very, very close to the right-of-way there. Talking about making the road less wide, obviously, if, if you could at all avoid it, it would be ideal not to make the road less wide. However, as Chris noted, you know, we do have all these properties being either on a corner. And the exception, as Chris pointed out, the property on the corner of Fourth Avenue and Second also has an alley and access from the alley as well, further mitigating necessarily that need for the on-street. And if you look at some air photos and things, you'll see a couple of cars parked on the road occasionally. However, you know, with the alley access and the other side streets, don't see it being, obviously, it will be an inconvenience somewhat, but it isn't a totally limiting factor for them in, in that case either. So it was a, kind of make the best scenario that you can out of it, really.
Yeah. And if I could comment again, again, if you look at a lot of the streets we've built in the last couple of years, where we had very limited right-of-way width, the streets were already about 24 feet wide. And so, and in a lot of those cases, we haven't actually limit, restricted parking. There was a. There was a segment of Third Street from last year's project, this past season's project for east to central, that was restricted to parking on one side just because it sees more traffic. Other portions of Third Street on this, that last season project were not restricted because it really only served the residents that lived right there. Again, this segment of Second, because it comes off the highway, we are going to see a little bit more traffic. For that reason, we are recommending it be reduced to one-sided parking, which again, from an engineering standpoint, I think is, we're accommodating the pedestrians, we're still accommodating parking, we're accommodating driving. It's actually a good, reasonable compromise.
And all the other streets will stay the same size?
Correct. Yep. Just these two block, two, two-block stretch of Second Street.
And I just have one more question. Did we do an appraisal to prove the increase in the market values this year?
No.
Any other questions? I guess I'll make a motion to receive the report and call for the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mark Bartusik. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Okay, passes four one. And the next res, item that we need to address is the, looking at the advance of the mutual, municipal state aid, street funds. So I guess I'll make a resolution also to accept it, taking advance if needed for the municipal state aid funds.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. If any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Next. Where's Glenn?
Glenn's sister passed away. He's at a funeral. So we talked that either I can present it and briefly go through his memo or you can table it till the next meeting, but we think that he has most of the information that's appropriate for your consideration. What this is, is a purchase of a new tractor mount ice resurfacer for the Parks Department. It was budgeted in the 2014 budget. They took a look at various options, two different models, an Olympia 500 and a Zamboni 200. Both tractor mounted, designed to be used behind the tractor that we have at the golf course, which doesn't get used very extensively in the winter. The intent there is to hopefully minimize or reduce the amount of staffing necessary to flood and improve the ice. Always a challenge with anything we do with either the hockey or the free skating out there is that we're really subject to mother nature. But when you take a look at the amount of hand spraying that needs to go on and the carving of the ice, staff believes that this can help improve and reduce our personnel costs associated with doing this. He provided you background references from some of the cities that they looked at trying to take a look at usage over in Carver, St. Paul and Edina. Total capital budget was a little over 15,000. The price in the two units is almost the same. The CTM Services out of Lonsdale at 13,075. And the Zamboni out of Paramount, California is where they've got that ownership from. But as Glenn provides in his recommendation, he's recommending the Olympia 500, even though it's about $150 more than the Zamboni because from a servicing standpoint, the Olympia is right next door in Lonsdale versus the Zamboni one is over in Prescott, Wisconsin. And so in taking a look at that, that's his recommendation to the council is for the Olympia 500.
Is, is this just on, Ken, do they use this piece of equipment just at the rink by this, the hockey rink and the ice skating rink just by this?
Yeah, the two rinks up at the Siding House Skate Park, correct.
They don't do the, the one outside the community center?
No.
Okay.
Nope. That's a separate, we don't maintain that one at all. Yep.
Okay.
We do have a third rink at Settlers Park that is flooded if weather and staff time allows, just in the infield of one of the ball fields down there, but wouldn't likely drive the equipment all the way down there to do that. And that's more of a recreational neighborhood rink, so.
Any questions? I guess I'll look for a motion to.
We'll move. Purchase the one from CTM Services in Lonsdale.
Okay, I got a motion by Dave Brusich, second by Pat Scripture. If there's no further comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Next on the agenda, consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, concerns or anything, any consent agenda items?
Can I point out one item in the bill list?
Sure.
Just in anticipation that there's a, an invoice for $499,000. I figured somebody would ask, so I figured I better take it on, is that that is the grant that we received from the Department of Employment and Economic Development, from the Minnesota Investment Fund for the Chart project for the purchase of a piece of equipment. It's an X-ray machine that they use out in the manufacturing building and we finally have submitted all the grant criteria to get that. And so that grant is to the city loan to Chart and as long as they create the jobs under the redevelopment agreement that we have, then they would be entitled to keep that. If they don't, then there's a clawback provision or a payback along that, in those regards. But as of right now, they've satisfied and provided a promissory note and all the other appropriate paperwork to, to receive the grant and we've submitted it and the state has given it to us. So now I need to cut a check and deliver that to Chart. I have one more in the amount of about 300,000 coming from the business development, public infrastructure program, again, from deed that we're working on trying to get reimbursement. So we'll have that one in the near future as well.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions? Any consent items? If not, I guess I'll look at a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We'll move.
I got a motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Dave Brusich. If there's no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Okay, on the miscellaneous, we're going to first talk about the MCD, whatever, that long one. Scott, you're going to help us with that?
I'm going to. I'm going to let Mike start because he dealt with it more than I did and I kind of got pulled into it today, but I think I can fill in the blanks when, when we get going here.
We've been made aware for some time that something was going to be coming from Springstead as they take a look at the city and noticing that notice of information that's come out from the Division of Enforcement of the Securities and Exchange Commission, the SEC, regarding self-reporting initiative designed as what they call the municipalities continuing disclosure cooperative initiative. And what it is, is that there's a SEC rule that requires the dissemination of information in connection with bond issues about certain primary and secondary reporting information that's supposed to go on in the bonding process. Springstead, which we engaged to do the work with us as far as undertaking all the appropriate filings and everything, has been working with us since 2009 and we're just fine. As they went back to take a look at certain things in the history of our other bond issues, they discovered and taken a look at the requirements that are associated with this SEC announced self-reporting initiative is that we had, or they found two continuing disclosure violations by the city. Again, the first one, which occurred in 2006, was a 37-day delay in the filing of the city's comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, with, if I can find the definition of that word there, the. If I can find it real. The, it's the Nationally Recognized Municipal Securities Information Repository System, NRM-SIR. And then the second one involved a failure by the city to file with that entity in 2007, the notice of redemption with respect to the optional redemption of the city's Series 2000B bonds. So effectively, these two occurred, one in 2006, one in 2007. I wasn't even here, so, you know, I can't say that I know anything about them. However, in filing that and in taking a look at that, we're required to go through a process and I provided you a few materials here tonight where we have to take a look at the violations in a self-reporting situation to determine whether we believe those violations are material in nature or not. And there's certain timing that goes with that and basically there's the look back for the last five years, which would be 2009 through 2014. We've not had any reporting issues, but when you go back to each of the respective years, they do a look back of five years prior to that. So the 2009 goes back ahead of that would encompass the 2006 and 2007. We received notice of this from Springstead late last Thursday. We talked with them on Friday, set up an appointment this morning to talk with Bond Counsel, John Utley, who was a partner in Scott's firm, trying to take a look at this because in this reporting process, we have to determine whether the violations involve materially inaccurate statements relating to prior, prior compliance. And so as we take a look at this, if we determine that they're basically non-material in nature or, excuse me, do I have it right? Yeah. That they're not materially major violations. Or if we determine in our opinion that they were, then we're required, included in your packet of materials tonight in front of you, a notice or a letter I got from John at about five o'clock today outlining what has to go on. And when you take a look at the issue on the second one of the two, the first one, the 37-day filing, that's pretty straightforward. That's supposed to be filed at the end of the year. The city apparently was 37 days late in 2006 with, with the CAFR. The second one, in the, in the failure to file the redemption with that NRM-SIR, there's questions in, even if you find that you're in violation of that, there's questions due to the integrity of that reporting system, whether it could have been filed, it just wasn't accounted for. And as we sit here today, I can't tell you with the short period of time that I've had to deal with this, that it was or wasn't reported, but in the redemption of the bonds, the bondholders would have been notified. And so it's a, it's a technical violation more than, than anything else. If we determine for self-reporting purposes, there is no penalty on reporting. However, you have to accept a settlement with the SEC that requires you to do a number of the things that are shown on the back page of the letter that we have from John Utley in that we would have to consent to the institution of a cease and desist proceeding with respect to the negligent violations of the Securities Act. We don't have to neither admit or deny the findings. For the five years from the date of the cease and desist proceeding going forward, we would have to disclose in our final official statements for any bonds that we would issue in the future in a clear and conspicuous fashion, the settlement terms with the SEC. We'd have to establish appropriate policies and procedures and training regarding continuing disclose, continuing disclosure obligations within 180 days of the cease and desist proceeding. We'd have to cooperate with any subsequent investigation by the Division of Enforcement of the SEC regarding the false statements, including the roles of individuals and other parties involved, and then provide the SEC staff with a compliance certificate regarding the application undertakings by the issuer on the one-year anniversary of the date of the cease and desist proceeding. So as we took a look at both of the options on whether we think it's material or not or whether we should self-report, as we talked with Bond Counsel, as we talked with their financial advisor, neither one would give us a specific recommendation because there's no specific guidelines on what's necessarily material or not from SEC, that there's nothing black and white that says this is material, this is immaterial or anything of that nature. And so you have to kind of do a self-assessment, self-critique. And so as we took a look at these and talked in general terms, that we haven't really had anything in the last seven years, that the reporting requirement is that you have, you had anything in the last five years? No, we haven't had anything in the last five years. And trying to assess the, the scope and the magnitude of the violations that we technically have identified, general consensus that we came to is that, in talking with, again, with John and Terry, is that we believe that the violations do not constitute a failure to comply in all material respects. And since there are possible monetary penalties in the event that the SEC disagrees, we needed to bring it to the council to make sure that we have discussion with you, indicate what our recommendation is and basically seek your concurrence in taking this approach. Otherwise, if we, if we didn't do that and SEC disagreed down the road and came back, then we could potentially be subject to a fine had we taken that approach. So I don't know whether that's a long-winded summary or whether you've got anything additional to add as the legal attorney, but the best advice we have in the discussion and the review of the disclosed violations is that they're not material in nature and that we not self-report.
And I'll just add to that. The reason you have this before you obviously is that the reporting requirement is at the end of this month, December 1st, for issuers like the city. John explained this to me and, and again, I hadn't, I hadn't dealt with it at all, so I kind of got pulled in at the end of the day today. But from the standpoint of what I see in John's letter, obviously, that's what's been discussed with Mike, that's what Terry Heaton's also discussed with Mike. There is very limited, in fact, no guidance from SEC, the SEC on what is material really or not. That's why Mike's brought this before you to, to make that conclusion, either support staff or not. The steps would be either, yes, if that's the conclusion, it's really that second to last sentence of John's second to last paragraph, which basically says that they are, the city has not had something where they did not comply in all material respects because these do go beyond, obviously, quite a while ago. I mean, they're, they're back in time. They are dealing with a system, as Mike pointed out, that had flaws and that's the reason it changed in 2009 and went away from that system. There isn't staff to affirm, you know, confirm, deny, whatever at this point in time and based on the limited information we have, there really does not appear to be beyond a technical type violation as Mike described at this point. You know, beyond that, certainly the council can say, no, we want to self-report. I mean, that's, that's certainly an option that's there. As Mike pointed out, the steps you'd have to deal with are the six steps on the back page of John's letter. That would be something that would have to occur in all bond issues for the next five years from the date of, that's the self-reporting would occur. That's certainly not the conclusion right now, just based on the two technical issues that have been pointed out by Springstead. Again, based on a system that doesn't exist and is not used and was replaced by another one five years ago.
Basically indicated all cities, counties, schools, anybody that issues bonds is involved in this review at this present time and everybody's having to go through this. And there isn't black and white direction coming out of the SEC process that, that's why you don't see a formal recommendation from John or Terry, that they're not legally in a position to be able to do that. However, as we've tried to weigh and assess and evaluate the scope of what did occur, trying to determine whether it was material in nature or not, and even in the fact that it's been discovered, there's no guarantee that there wasn't reporting, but it just didn't show up on that, as it said on the first page, the NRM-SIR system, which changed and they have a new system in place as of July 1 of 2009 that the various entities are using. And so it's our best assessment and recommendation to, to do as John has outlined.
Basically, the way I see it is the 37 days late. We did file, we were late. There could be a possible penalty for that, but it's not like it wasn't filed. The other one, we're not 100% sure that we didn't file because a different financial group we were dealing with back then versus Springstead. So, I mean, we could have filed. So I guess I look at it as, and I kind of concur what they're saying, is that, you know, that these didn't cause any financial hardship to anyone, to the bondholders.
So it was a financial firm that was supposed to file these for us?
I, I don't know. That I didn't go far enough back that when, when we retained or recommended, or I recommended in 2009 that we retain Springstead, is we specifically contractually have an agreement and a contract with Springstead that they do this type of reporting for us. I can't say un- I can't say unequivocally, sitting here today, the financial advisor that was in place, that they were under contract to do it. Even if they had done it, because of the differences, as you heard me talk about, it may, even though it's identified that we didn't report, and what that was is that there was a missed redemption notice in '07 for the 2000B bonds, that was not filed with Emma or another secondary reporting agency, but obviously, the bondholders were notified in order for the transaction to have occurred. So if the notice had been filed, but isn't able to be found or determined that it existed within that NRMSIR system, there's no guarantee, just because it wasn't done, doesn't mean that it was, that there's been problems with that system, which why the new system was created in July of 2009. And so there's enough unfounded, unsubstantiated abilities to say that we either did or didn't do it, but it's identified because the notice of the redemption wasn't found.
Do we know which, we don't know which firm we were using back then?
Yes.
That we could ask?
I do know, but I don't know if there was a contractual arrangement to do what we currently do with Springstead.
They would probably know, wouldn't they?
Even if there was, Pat, it doesn't matter that the notice was not filed, and so we still have, it technically is a violation. So I can't take this and pass this on to somebody else and have them incur the outcome of not doing that. We, as the issuing entity, still have the responsibility to ensure that that gets done.
What are the ramifications of us disclosing that now on these five or six steps? I mean, can you shed some light on that? For example, if we have to include the, for the next five years, because of the cease and desist proceeding, disclose that on our final, or actually on the official statements to the bonds of the insurer? I mean, is there a ramification? Will that, could that prevent the sale of upcoming bonds? Could it affect the bond rating? Could it affect the interest that we pay?
That's possible.
It's possible, or it will, or?
I don't know if it will or not, and I asked that question of John Utley, just to kind of say, okay, what's really, what does this mean? You'd have to disclose that in the official statement, and somebody looking to purchase those bonds would make that determination if that was good, bad, or indifferent. And so I think it's speculative, I don't, I don't think you can directly answer that, but it's certainly possible, and that's the whole point of the official statement when it goes out, is that a, an entity or individual desiring to purchase those bonds can look at that and say, okay, this is great, city does everything perfectly, or they don't. That's why this provision was put in place, and that's why there's this look back that's going on. The reality is, the city has done everything fine for the last seven years. And, you know, the problem that we have is, it's true, you had a different bond counsel at that time, you had a different financial advisor at that point in time. And based on the timing of this, as Mike said, he got this information last Thursday, John was looking at it this morning, and then called me and said, we got to talk, so at least you know something about this. It's all because of the deadline coming up, and everybody's trying to scramble to look at this and see what's material or not. I mean, if you have a doubt, obviously, you can disclose. It has an impact, potentially. From the standpoint of what staff has concluded, that this is not material, based on the very limited guidance we see out there, which is really none, and according to articles that are out right now, the SEC did not respond to say what was material or not. And that's the problem, where there is really no guidance with this. It's, I, you know, from the standpoint of those steps that need to be taken, are they onerous? Well, yeah, I mean, there's some extra reporting and things that have to go into it. Can it have a potential impact? The answer is yes, to all of those issues, yes, Sean, that's potentially true, yes.
Is there any statute of limitations? I mean, how far back?
Really, that was the five-year, yeah, that was the five-year provision we were talking about here, and, you know, from a convoluted standpoint, you would say, well, wait a second, 2006 and 2007 are beyond that five years. Well, there's guidance, again, from the Government Finance Officers Group that's kind of saying, no, you really look back to 2004, which, you know, from the way I look at it, that's 10 years ago. So I see why everybody's kind of looking at this going, huh?
So there's no court cases at all yet?
Well, no, because it's a new thing that's come out, and the date actually even changed from a standpoint of September to now, we're really looking at the December 1st date of this year.
Well, it would seem to me that the SEC has just as much issue with this problem as we do, because they were the ones that changed the rules in 2009.
Well, what primarily?
They have more.
Well, they probably do, but they won't admit it.
What primarily precipitated this, from what little bit I've been able to find out in a short period of time, is that it really is involving a couple of school districts that weren't doing the things that they should have in doing the appropriate disclosures in the bond arena. Nobody here, so please don't look at anybody here that...
Yeah, Jerry.
I was wondering why you're sticking around here.
Hey, Jim, get to the door, so make sure he doesn't sneak out.
And so what the SEC did in early March is that they stated that they were going to allow for a voluntary self-reporting or examination to give people the opportunity to take a look at that and make a decision that, you know, if you report, there's no penalties or anything of that nature, but if you determine that it's material in nature, then you have to go through and undertake those various steps that John's identified in the back of his letter. And so as we tried to take a look at the extent and the scope and the, you know, what's associated with the two reported violations, is that, as we've looked at the questions that SEC provided, or that you try to look at, as to the scope and the extent and the repetitiveness and those kind of things, and, you know, did it materially result in any impact to others and those kinds of things, we don't believe, after talking with the financial advisor and bond counsel, that they're material in nature.
What do we have to do? Approve this?
Basically, I need to have the council accept staff's recommendations, as John has outlined here, that you concur or agree with the foregoing determination by staff as relates to this assessment.
I so moved.
Yeah, so moved.
Let's get him rid of it.
Did it good.
Yes. I got a motion by Mark Bartusik, second by Dave Brujic, to take the staff recommendation and our bond counsel and financial advisors, that the two incidences are immaterial in nature. So, any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
The reason being, again, just to bring closure to it, is that if we're wrong, we didn't make this decision, staff didn't make this decision in a vacuum, and didn't not tell you that this was going on, in case we're ultimately wrong, and the SEC would try to come back and do something. We've tried to weigh it, evaluated, examined it, we've reported it to you to let you know that that's the extent, this is what we're recommending, and you're in concurrence with us.
Yeah. So what you're saying, Mike, is if that anybody's going to go to jail, it's going to be us five?
Yeah. Our attorney recommended.
He's not, you're actually making an informed, district attorney decision based on the information that's been supplied to you, and that's the whole rational basis for making that determination by you as a council, that, you know, if somebody comes looking at it, you clearly were informed, and you are the people that make those decisions. So that's why Mike brought it forward.
You're saying everything that you just explained is rational?
I don't think everything there is rational, but what you did was rational, so you took that information, digested it, and said, no, let's do this, yeah.
You know, federal government isn't always rational.
Most times are not.
The next thing additional to the agenda was a gambling permit here for the New Prague Hockey Association. It looks like they're having an event, Friday, December 5th, at the Park Ballroom, and asking to sell pull tabs and raffle pull tabs and tip boards at this event for a fundraiser for the Hockey Association. So, any questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the gambling permit, second by Sean Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Okay, now we're really to the true miscellaneous. Jim, you got anything?
I do not.
Bruce?
No.
Ken?
Nope.
Moving along. Mary Jo? She's going to surprise us one of these days. Patrick, you good? Chris, you good? Gentlemen? Okay. Scott, do you have anything?
Just quick, and Mike wanted me to provide a minor update to, obviously, the issue that the city has with Cedar Lake. We are still moving forward and working on finalizing a final arbitrator, to have a panel of three. Staff is met, staff is pulling documents together, and those dates will be forthcoming. At that point, we'll obviously have some type of closed session with the council. I would assume that would be sometime in December, Mike, just to feel where the timing is, and getting folks together and getting schedules together. We're trying to figure out when this may occur. It won't be before the end of the year, but it should be shortly thereafter, in the first few months. But I just wanted to give you a quick update, rather than have a closed session for the purpose of a one-minute update like that.
Thank you. Pat, do you have anything?
Yeah, actually, I have a few things. The golf contract with...
GME?
Yeah, GME. How are we coming with that? Are we...
Done the golf board's agenda tomorrow night.
Okay.
And that should come to us on Wednesday.
That private street that was going to become public?
We are getting very close to getting that wrapped up, yeah. Scott's office is put together, we've got all the documents, it's in the hands of the association, they've actually acted on most of it, but we're just getting some clarification from a title company before we take over, bettering the deed at a future council meeting, so hoping everything lines up, maybe December 1st or the meeting thereafter. So, we wanted to get, they wanted snow plowed, obviously, by the city, but we didn't quite make that with the November snow. So, we're working on it, and not for lack of effort, not on both sides, so.
Getting close, huh?
Getting there.
And then, I have one more thing. I'd like to kind of talk about all this information we got about the school and them wanting to possibly close Central Avenue North, and I just think that, after I read through everything, I just felt like, you know, one of the options should have been to simply close the street and not extend the road at all, you know, extend it around, and what street is it again? It's...
Central.
Central. It couldn't just be closed there and...
Well, what do you mean, closed? You're going to have to, you know, you have traffic that goes there, so you're going to have to divert it somewhere.
You could have it closed where it says, no outlet, or whatever they say.
But where are you going to divert it to?
Just have it closed like a cul-de-sac kind of a thing, not really a cul-de-sac, but just a dead-end road.
But you still have to have an option to divert it, so you're going to divert it on a street that maybe you can't handle it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I didn't...
If you move it to First Avenue, you know, it's not real easy to get out of First Avenue with the way that 37 is set up. That's not a real viable, I mean, it's, right now, it's not a very easy road to get out. So if you close that, and you're going to say, okay, you either got to go back to Columbus or you got to go to First, you know, Columbus has a four-way stop, but if people are going to go to First, I think we are going to have to do some kind of traffic change there somehow, because the way that road curves comes in, you can't really see much to the left, because of the curvature of that road.
On First Avenue?
Yeah. So I think it would be a very hazardous corner. So just closing that street may solve one problem, but it actually may create a bigger problem, because you got to have avenues for people who use Central now, you know, and they may not want to go to Columbus, because that's a four-way stop, and there's always high school traffic, so then they're going to go to First, and now you might cause some other issues that we might have to address.
Would you think that would be the preferred way to go, because there's no stop signs? There's like three coming down this way. Three stop signs on...
Oh, you mean on Central?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, it's not an easy, but it's just, I think it's a lot easier getting on to 37 off Central than it is on First.
I just wished that the whole city council could hear what you and Mike got to hear, and I wish we could invite Tim here, Tim Dipburner, and whoever else he needs to bring, to share everything with us.
Let me take a stab at trying to answer. Mayor Nicolai, myself, and Ken Onage were invited to a meeting with school representatives and their architects to talk about the various features and issues associated with a request, should the school have come forward. Jerry's here, that we were invited to participate in a discussion with them. It wasn't the entire school board, it wasn't the entire city council. They asked us to come and talk about some of the pros and cons and the issues with that, because one of the three alternatives that the school is considering through their facilities' planning process is an issue that would result in the middle school adding on various additional components to the middle school and building over and across Central Avenue. So their question to us was, what are some of the issues and potential costs that we would need to consider in that alternative? Because the facilities committee is coming down to a decision, and I think they have their sixth meeting this week on Wednesday. So it wasn't a formal request to the city council to consider a formal vacation, if in fact, that were to come, and we advised them of that, that neither the mayor, nor Ken, nor myself could give them either a positive or a negative assessment of what was done. We tried to identify the relevant features that would normally be considered in a formal street vacation. Under our city charter and under state law, that's all required to go through a formal process in front of the council and through a formal public hearing. So we were there simply being asked to give them a general overview of kind of the pros and cons of the vacation. Could that be closed and dead-ended? Possibly, if there was an appropriate turnaround. Could it be rerouted? Possibly, yes. Could it not be approved? Yes. The only, the people that can make that decision is this entire governing body in a formal public hearing process. So we weren't there trying to act on behalf of the council to not get any information from you, and in fact, it was just the opposite. I bent over backwards, based on the fact that we were invited that meeting, to give you a heads-up, that we had the meeting with them, here's a copy of what they're looking at as alternatives. One of the issues and the lower-cost options that they're contending with might involve the closure of that road. And if they happen to move in a direction that that would have been the preferred choice, then in all likelihood, that request could, at some point in time, come forward to the city council for your consideration.
Right, it's just that, if you look at this information, I'm assuming they got the same thing here, the Central Avenue North information summary about closing it, it's like a million dollars to do it. Well, they're probably thinking, well, that's, you know, probably not the best option, and there's a lot of different roadblocks and things that have to be done, where if you just decided to close off that street, which I don't see in here, close it off and make it a dead end, then it wouldn't cost a lot.
That wasn't intended to be an all-inclusive, final-defined report or anything. It was simply a compilation of information that the superintendent asked of us, and I worked with city staff to try to identify some of the preliminary issues that would normally be contended with if they formally came into the council arena to request a vacation.
But they're basing decisions that they're going to be making on this...
They were already doing that to begin with, that that was an option.
But even if you close the street, if they build on the street, you're still going to have to move that infrastructure.
Right.
They're not going to want to have a sewer.
$200,000 versus a million?
So you know that it's $200,000?
In here.
Okay. So, but yeah, but I mean, but that's only part of it, and like, we brought to them is, if you're going to move traffic flow somewhere else, we might have to widen streets, we might have to do something that that's changed.
Does anybody really ever use that street? I mean...
Probably not, but they will be once you close Central.
You've got to give them another avenue to go, you can't just say, everyone has to use Columbus. Because if you close Central, you can't just say, you're required to use Columbus. People say, no, because...
Well, I can use whatever.
What's the other option? It's either First, Central, or Columbus. You've got three streets there, Pat. You got three streets there, Pat. You close one of them, you got two. One of them's hazardous right now, until we have to do something.
Pat, there's no way you can get to Highway 21 from here unless you go well south onto Second and then over.
See, I don't have all the information, but I just got this.
Well, the streets, there's only three streets, that hickin', hookin' to 37. You close one, you got two. One, I tell you one thing, most people stay off of Columbus because of the four-way stop, and then you get all those high school kids coming through there. No one wants to hit that during school time. So then you're gonna move over to First, and the other issue you got there now is charts on the other side, and you trying to make a left on there, not being able to see, good, try it sometime. You're not gonna like it.
That's a short little window during the day.
No, it's not.
The sightlines are always there. It's a safety concern. When you pull out to that intersection, because of the angles, a road engineer would not engineer that intersection that way. But it's allowed to be that way right now, because there is low-flow traffic on it. It has much lower flow than Central Avenue does.
Which intersection are you talking about?
First Avenue.
First Avenue.
So there, I think if we would vacate Central, we would definitely have to do something to First, not only widen it to handle more traffic flow, because that's gonna be the second alternative out of this area, and something at that sightline corner, which is not gonna be cheap. Because now you're dealing with the county and that whole thing. So, yeah, you know, I understand your concerns and that, but you just can't say, you know, let's close a road and not think of the other options, you know, how is the traffic flow gonna move? You can't just say, oh, no, hardly use that road. That doesn't make sense, because you see a lot of people use that road, you know, and because it's easier to get on to 37 than it is on First.
Ken Onich from our staff sits on the Planning Facilities Committee, and that question had been posed to him earlier in the planning process, but as they have attempted to narrow down their options, they were looking at three specific options out of the four, I think, that were originally identified for that. As they started coming down to the end of the process, and I indicated they're having their sixth of six meetings this week, or whether they extended it or not, I don't know, the superintendent said, this is where they're gravitating to, can you tell me about some of the pros and cons of us looking at that option? Because in taking a look at that, is probably the least costly option, what they're looking at, is they'd have to deal with the realities of what goes into the council and the community formally evaluating that option. So if they were to choose that, he was wondering, how would we respond to that, or what would our position be? As we tried to convey, whether we personally all wanted that to happen, or whether we didn't want it to happen, is really not our decision. We identified some factors, but the council would have to hold that through a public hearing process and ultimately make a decision after holding a public hearing. Whether the timing of getting through all of that fits the timeline that they're looking at, or how that enters into their evaluation of that option, they were looking for information to help just understand that. But all we conveyed is that the council as a whole makes that decision, not the three of us.
I wanted to add, too, I think the topic of, you know, a million dollars is, I don't wanna say exactly like this, but it's a very small amount compared to one of the other options being millions of dollars more. So the million dollars, I don't think would be a stifling number for them to say that that makes it not viable. So, you know, when you're talking, you know, multi-millions of dollars, a million dollars, I don't think would make or break that as an option.
Well, then this Scott County transportation planner wouldn't be for it, moving it?
We cannot, per the county guidelines, and again, this is all just without a formal request in their hands, either shift the traffic to a different access point. So we've got First Avenue, we've got Central as already existing points that do not currently meet the access spacing guidelines, which would be eighth mile or 660-foot minimums. So you can't move one of those accesses over and have them meet their guidelines for the spacing. So it was either eliminate the access or reroute it to another existing one, although there's still the peripheral, from our traffic flow standpoint, is that going to work with the number of cars a day that would be expected on there? We just don't have the data to say, yeah, it would, or no, it wouldn't, and tie that in, obviously, with the chart traffic study that was done two years ago, two and a half years ago, and kind of put all that information together to get a true full-traffic picture. So we just don't have that information right now. And we, I believe, would need to do that to make sure that we're keeping the public safe and keeping traffic flowing, not just for the school, but for everybody else in the neighborhood. So, you know, a lot of things are possible, but I don't think we have all the information here to make a good, informed decision at this point. But as Mike said, again, we haven't had the formal request yet, at this point, to consider a vacation, so.
They're making decisions, aren't they, right now? You're on that committee, aren't you?
Yeah, as far as the task force has come up with a?
They're making recommendations.
An option to?
When's their next meeting?
This Wednesday at Alcoa New Market, Eagleview Elementary.
And is this, like, you know, you're at, there were so many meetings, which is this, are you almost done with the meetings, or?
Of the scheduled six meetings?
Yeah.
The one this Wednesday would be number six. But it doesn't mean, that doesn't mean it would be the last one. It could continue longer, if need be. I don't know, I wouldn't be the one making that decision, so.
But just because the council hasn't acted on that request, doesn't mean that they can't choose that as a preferred option. It just means if they choose that, then the school is in a position that they would have to bring that issue forward through the city process and the city council to get an answer to that. In the alternative, they could build a walkway up over the top of it, assuming that gets approved as an alternate, and not have to close it.
I know about that option, too. Okay, well, this is my opinion.
Anything else? David? Sean?
No.
Mark? I don't have anything either, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mark Bartusik. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're outta here. Thank you, everyone.